Evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning meeting for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Secretary, can I have your roll call, please?
Absolutely. Chairman Cattulli.
President.
Commissioner Bellamy. Commissioner Goszewski. Commissioner Horton.
President.
Commissioner Oler.
President.
Commissioner Prince.
President.
Commissioner Wise.
President.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Communications, we have any communications? No communications. Okay, did we receive the meeting minutes for October 7th?
Chairman, no, we do not have those available at this moment. We will have them and tonight's meeting minutes for next meeting in November.
Okay, understood. Item number five, 5A, is a final subdivision plat, sub 2525. You want to take it away, Suzanne?
Sure, this is on the consent agenda. It's final subdivision plat, S U B 2552, a major final bonded plat of subdivision, creating 33 residential lots, open space, and public rights of way in Phase Two of Hope Point.
Any commissioner members have any comments or concerns? Anyone from the public have any comments or concerns? Well, okay then. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that the Planning Commission approve the major bonded final plat of subdivision, sub dash 25 dash 52, prepared for Phase Two of Hope Point.
Any final comments before we take a vote? Anyone from the public? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item 6A, the applicant requested to postpone that sketch plan, S U B 25-19, a sketch plan of subdivision, creating 41 residential lots, open space, and public rights of way at Harper Valley off Tommy Chestnut Road.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the council postpone the hearing on this matter.
Have a first, have a second.
Second.
Okay. Anyone from the public like to make comment? No? Okay. Entertain approval, a motion, sorry, entertain a vote for approval. We've had a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item 6B, the applicant has also requested to postpone. It's rezoning request, Z 2515. This is a rezoning of one parcel containing .33 acres located on the corner of Point Set and 37th Avenue South, from R2 medium density residential to highway commercial.
Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission postpone the rezoning request, Z dash 25 dash 15, as submitted.
Any comments before we take a vote? No comments, any comments from the public? Okay, entertain the motion, we have the motion, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have item 7A, preliminary subdivision plat, S U B 2533, a major preliminary plat, creating 127 residential lots, common area, and rights of way in dockside preserve, which is also known as Bahama Island. Planning Commission recommended approval of original Phase Two entitlement for Bahama Island as an RV resort in January 2023. Development passed, second reading at City Council, March of 2023. In March of this year, Planning Commission recommended approval of an amendment converting the RV resort into single-family residential neighborhood, which was Long Bay Village, consisting of 137 lots, including 35 waterfront lots with private docks along the intercoastal waterway. Council approved the new neighborhood in April of 2025. In July of this year, the applicant received BZA approval for a variance allowing the removal of certain protected trees with the conditions that trees 7, 11, 17, 20, 24, 29, 32, 36, and 37 be retained and protected during construction by providing sufficient protection zones around them. In August of this year, Planning Commission recommended approval of an amendment increasing the allowed building height for the piano residences. This development will be accessed by Bowline Boulevard and additional access by Sea Verde Drive. Total subdivision is 73.42 acres. The subject property is currently two lots of record and zone PDD, and the parcels are unused and vacant. This subdivision will be creating 127 residential lots, 32.42 acres of common area and public rights of way. The smallest lot size is 7,115 square feet, and largest lot size is 15,915 square feet. The density of the subdivision is 1.73 dwelling units per acre. All setbacks conform to the standards of the PDD district. This plat will be creating a connection to the existing Sea Verde Drive, which is 50 foot wide, continues Bowline Boulevard at 66 foot wide, and creates Sandy Point Drive, Helm Lane, Dockside Drive, Bayfront Drive, Horizon Lane, Tide Creek Road, and Estuary Place, all 50-foot public rights of way. All new roadways are designed to meet city standards, including sidewalks and street trees, and all construction documents outlining the street trees improvements have been reviewed by city staff. As for staff review, planning has some concerns regarding how the trees required by BZA to be saved will be preserved and reflected on the plans, especially the tree located on the cul-de-sac at Horizon Lane, which is Tree 17. The sidewalk appears to be quite close to the tree's 36th trunk, and more than one-half of the tree's drip line will be disturbed during construction. Cutting or disturbing that large of percentage of tree roots increase the likelihood of the tree's failure or death. And there were no other issues at the staff level.
We talked about this at the workshop this morning extensively, about tree protection during construction. Do we have any further comments or questions, concerns?
So this morning, in regards to the last diagram, Amber, we identified three additional three trees besides that number 17 that look to be real close to the roadway. There was concerns with the commission in regards to how those trees are going to be protected, because being so close, more than likely their roots are going to get disturbed, if not damaged, which again will lead to more failures of trees that needed to be saved, as well as the one additional one, I believe it's E06, that needed to be added back in through the BZA.
Yes, so the E06 is being saved, and I know we mentioned 7, 17, and 32 were the trees that you were concerned about.
All right, so is there somebody here that could speak about it?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is there somebody here that could speak about it on what their corrective actions or potential of saving those trees so that we don't lose them?
Yep, Phillip's here.
My name's Phillip Hornbeck, I'm with Development Resource Group. I got in contact with Planning Department today concerning those four trees that were brought to your attention. It is our intent to protect these trees and retain them through construction and into the final development. So going through one at a time, I, let's see if I can read this and zoom in. The very first one, I believe it is 7 on that list of four that were discussed. The one, I don't know if your, does your screen share ours? Okay, this one right here. We are proposing a tree well there with tree protection specified within the landscape plans, details and notations on how to protect it through the construction sequence and how to maintain that tree once the tree well is installed. It is also depicted on the site work development plans, called out to be protected with BMPs per DES to be utilized during the construction process. So we feel that that tree specifically, that we've put all the elements in place on our landscape and site development plans, that we can be successful in protecting that tree.
Excuse me, Phillip, can you, and could you educate me on what BMPs are?
Oh, just best, it's a best practice. Basically, it is means and methods that are established by the state that they recommend and have specifications on when it comes to different construction activities, such as tree protection, tree fencing around that tree, things of that nature. So utilizing means and methods that have been established by the state, not just a contractor making up their recommendation for protection.
Gotcha, so like you said, it would be tree fencing. Is that, is part of that standard nine feet from the base of the tree?
The, yes, that, while I was coordinating with the Planning Department, they reminded me about the zoning code of that distance, which is half the diameter breast height of the tree in inches into feet to establish that drip line. And we will implement details into the site work construction set that depict that offset. And if there's any geometrical modifications we need to perform on the sidewalk or the curb in order to, you know, maintain that distance and ensure that is out of the construction zone, we're going to go ahead and make that revision to make sure that those four are protected, and we'll submit those details to Planning Department as well prior to finalizing to make sure everyone's comfortable with all four of these trees that are in question.
Bill, as you develop this protection, and you're in that, using that formula, and you fence off that, as you, I guess the thing is that we don't know, and you can't really see here, is there going to end up being a situation where there's a three-foot grade change around that tree, even though we're out nine feet, that could again have a negative impact on its potential?
That's the very first tree I mentioned, that's why I pointed that one out. There's a substantial difference between the existing ground and where we need to be due to the flood zone, getting those building pads up at that flood zone. So a tree well will be utilized, so basically a retaining wall around the tree specified by the landscape architect in order to keep that tree. The other ones we're keeping, we've maintained the proposed surface, the proposed elevation to be within six inches of that existing ground, either up or down, in order to maintain that existing grade and make sure we're not impacting those root systems.
Does there be a, because you're elevating that tree, will there be a special irrigation system that will keep, make sure that that area gets the proper water?
No, we do not have a specific irrigation element proposed specifically for the tree saves, just the, yeah, no irrigation proposed.
That well might accumulate more water than you want. So what do you do if it's too much?
Then you probably irrigate it and drain, then add the caveat.
Irrigate or drain, or both?
Both. You irrigate during dry season and make sure it's draining during wet.
Yeah.
Or if you happen to overwater.
Well, if I'm building up everything for the pads, it won't naturally create a void.
Could you explain the protection measures for the other three in question, 7, 17, and 32? Or E06? Yeah.
Yeah, the E06 down here, I don't know if I can zoom in, can I? Hold control. Ah, gotcha.
There we go.
There we go. Hey, look at that.
You need that this morning.
The E06 is located outside of the right of way, it's in a common area. The ground there is being graded in order to create a smooth slope transition into the wetland, so the surface grades, elevations are only slightly going to be modified in order to smooth it out, that way that stormwater can drain its way to the wetland. The proposed elevation at that tree is going to be approximately the same elevation as the tree today, and there are no major infrastructure elements being installed around it. So we're confident that with the tree protection fencing around it, with the specified distance per the code, that we'll be able to protect that tree and retain it.
What about the street trees and sidewalks?
The sidewalks, I can't get a distance exactly off it from here, probably a good 10, 15 feet away, if not more. The landscape architect's drawing is, as you can see, it's colorful icons that represent, it's not the survey quality location. On the construction site work plans, those are survey quality locations, and that's where we'll establish our distances and make sure we abide by the zoning code. And if there's, happens to be any issue there, we'll have to modify that sidewalk in order to meet that distance. So we will do everything in our power to retain the trees and maintain that distance, even if it means modifying some of this geometry.
So by modifying, we've got trees that are to the right of that tree. Would that impact those, the one, the one tree that's under EOC and the one directly below it?
The street tree that's to the right, this one under my hand here?
I think the hand is a little bit off on our screen, but directly under where it's at, or directly behind where it says EOC. I mean, E06, gah.
Over here?
Nope.
Down and to right, right there, right there and directly below that.
Those are actually across the street on the other side, so there's a street trees on the other side of the road.
Correct, but if we have to adjust the sidewalk, I'm guessing it's going to curve out, and that curve has got to go somewhere, because you've got street standards and sidewalk standards.
And if any of those proposed street trees need to be relocated, since they are proposed, we can place them wherever need be.
Oh, those are not trees that have to be saved?
No, those are, those are proposed plantings.
Okay, all right.
So one thing to point out.
Gotcha.
Yeah, all of these along the road and within the parcels that don't have labels on them, those are all proposed plantings.
Okay.
Lots and lots of new trees being planted on this side.
Thank you for that clarification.
And to continue with discussing how we're going to be saving the trees, same idea with E06, we're going to use over here on, I believe that was 32 was the other one in question. Same idea, this one's going to be located in a front yard between two parcels, so it's going to be a little bit easier to save that one. I believe our distance already works out from the tree to the back of the sidewalk and from the tree to the homes here, but we will develop, those exhibits issued on the planning, and they can verify everything.
I think looking at this, where we can actually, you know, see a better visual of it on the top, not the very top left, but maybe, what is it, add 31 in its parentheses 29, we might need to look at that one also, right there, yeah.
And what we could do is, for every tree that we're protecting out here, not just the four that have been pointed out, we can create that exhibit, an issue at the planning again, to make sure that everyone's comfortable. And the last one was, yeah, this one here. So this is the one that was the primary concern, that kind of sparked this conversation about the drip line, the root system being impacted by the road. Right now, the tree is located in the same location as the street trees generally are going to be planted. That needs to be updated right there. So what we'll need to do is modify the geometry of this eyebrow in order to get the required distance per the code away from that tree, and that's something we'll work on immediately and get that to Planning Department in order to proceed with the preliminary plat and the site work development plan approval.
So where do we go from here, Amber, Suzanne, to accomplish what we talked about today in our commission workshop to ensure that this is handled?
I guess my biggest concern is, the preliminary plat is the document that you guys are approving, but the preliminary plat is really two documents. It's the plat document as well as the construction drawings that accompany it. And you guys don't get into that review, you're just presented with our comments on it if we have any outstanding issues. So this is kind of like the outstanding issue. So I mean, it's really up to you if you want to go ahead and approve it, knowing that staff is going to stay on top of this issue until, because it is a preliminary plat, the final geometry of that can be modified for the final plat. The test is substantial consistency with the preliminary plat. This is just the one that gives me the most pause, because not only is it in what will be our public right of way, so the city will be accepting responsibility for that tree, and if it does decline, then we're, will be accepting responsibility for that liability. But I've talked to Jim Granger in Parks and Rec, and he said he would even, you know, talk with, meet with DRG to kind of talk to them about some options for how they've dealt with trees very close to the right of way, with sidewalks and things, and he could provide some ideas. So if you're comfortable with moving it forward with staff dealing with that, that's fine. If you want to postpone it, if, I mean, there's, you know, you know the options y'all have in front of you, really.
Now, will we not have a development agreement that goes along with this one?
There will be a development agreement on this next meeting, but it won't be dealing with this issue.
So if we, if we, can we ask for a warranty? In other words, if they're not here for five years from now, can we get them to put up a bond?
You can certainly make that.
Specifically, so that if we go back five years from now and they're dead?
You can make that comment for the DA.
Call on them. Well, I mean, did we do it now or are we doing it in the DA?
If we go ahead and approve it now, then it contradicts what we say in the DA.
And not just the bond when they get a CO, but something that's going to, because that can be, you know, a few months.
Yeah.
We need something that would endure at least a five-year kind of a period.
So if you're, if you're wanting to see if that's something that a certified arborist would say five years would be something that's reasonable, that maybe we could ask some of the certified arborists that are on city staff if that's reasonable, postpone this for now with the recommendations, that that comes back for the next meeting, and we do the DA and the this at the same time, so that we know for sure, and we have more information from, you know, maybe city staff, and we have a little bit more information and exact, because I know this is architectural landscape thing, but the construction drawings to show we're nine feet out from the drip line.
Absolutely.
And then we maybe can get some clarification if we, you know, could we ask for that bond? And for whatever we decide the period is, and basically that would be outside and separate from a CO, because we're talking about something that we're going to protect, that we're looking to protect for a little bit of a time. It'd probably be less than $200,000.
Can we back up a second? You made the comment about the city wasn't sure about taking over this tree in the right of way, although we've got a whole development here that looks like we've got all these plantings in the right of way. What's the difference in the plantings, once it's turned over to the city, versus the tree that exists being in that same or less of the right of way?
It's really just a matter of a tree that's grown up, it's 36 inches in diameter already, and then you destroy its root system to whatever degree, versus a two-inch caliper tree that grows up in those conditions, and it adapts its roots to the already existing hardscape. It's, it can still be a hazard tree, I mean, they can definitely still be a problem, but being on the outside of the sidewalk, they have a lot more room to grow, so it's, it's just not as big of a concern to us.
Ed, are you asking if the city is going to be required to take over maintenance of the city streetscape?
Yeah, the city, if they're public streets, the city, after the final plat, once everything's done, the engineers submit, you know, all these warranties for the public infrastructure, for the roads, I think it's a year, Phillip probably knows more about that detail, and then we accept the roads and they're ours.
And the sidewalks and the street trees?
Sidewalks, the street trees, all of that.
It was just, seemed like it was, we were going to have all these additional trees planted in an area where you were saying we didn't want to take over trees in those areas.
No, 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 we want to take over trees, we just don't want to take over trees that may have been damaged.
It was the size of the tree then, the majority, okay, okay, that's.
All right, well, one thing that I would give a heads up on, on the DA, just, just to give them a heads up, is that right now we're requiring $300 for Parks and Recreation per DU, right?
They're still doing that, they're not admitting that part.
If, I didn't realize that the Parks and Rec was having to take over every single sidewalk, street tree, streetscape in these developments. So going forward, I am going to be requesting more than $300 per dwelling unit. So that, that will be coming up in the workshop that we decide to have, because I know that Jim Granger and his team, this is a whole nother element that needs to be funded, not by, you know, typical taxpayer dollars, but to give us a head start on our city budget, because that, I mean, that's huge. I did not realize that, I just, you learn something new every day.
So where does that leave us right now?
So.
Are we postponing?
I think postpone is the best option for the applicant to get us a little bit more information, get more information from city staff, to make sure that they're comfortable with looking at the plans, to make sure that everything could possibly be saved. And I know Ed wants to propose some.
Warranty.
Warranty, and it might give Chris some time to look into that before.
It's reasonable so that they have some extra understanding that, hey, this tree's pretty sacred, you know, we want to protect it. And then if it's not protected, we'd have some remedy to do something about it in the future.
I think that would give Chris time, city staff time, and DRG some time to, I feel like make everybody a little bit more comfortable.
And you get your money back if the tree lives.
Are you paid with the premium? Are you paid with the premium?
Are we?
Okay, are we through discussing this? Any further comments by the commissioners? None, any comments by the public? None. Okay then, entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission postpone based on the idea of there might be a lack of protection for drip lines for the trees that are identified as number seven, seventeen, thirty-one, thirty-two, and E O six on the plan.
Here we have a motion.
One correction, thirty-one's being removed.
It's, I thought thirty-one is being saved in the green, or it says add dash thirty-one in parentheses twenty-nine. Is that number twenty-nine? You see which one I'm talking about? It's more towards the middle, up, right, up a little bit more, yep, right there.
Is that thirty-one?
It says add dash thirty-one parentheses twenty, that's number twenty-nine, okay, let me.
Thirty-one's to the right, and it's a removed tree right there, yes.
Yeah, I think thirty-one was not, was not to be.
Okay.
Detail of the motion.
Let me clean that up for you, Allison. Do I need to restate it and click? Okay. I don't want to create another mess. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Straight?